Actions on items, not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comment at this time?
During this time, members of the public can comment on any topic that is not on the agenda. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the Raytime feature to organize any public comments. When you hear your name called, we'll send your request to mute your mic and you may begin speaking. Each person will be given two minutes. At this time, it seems that there are no public comments. Back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Joshua. I'm looking at the first item on the agenda. It's it's with regard to the Senate Bill one eight, excuse me, eight ninety-three, the San Mateo Community College Fee Rate Modification. We have a speaker from the San Mateo County Community College Board, who's going to discuss this this evening, but I do not believe John is here at this point. So what I would like to do, if we could, is move on to Agenda Item Four, which is the North Fair Oaks Rezoning Extension and Zoning Revision Project. It's an overview of the proposed modification to the North Fair Oaks CMU NMU zoning boundaries and an update revision and a correction to current zoning regulations. That presentation is going to be given by Will Gibson of the Planning and Building Department. Go ahead, Will.
Thank you, Chair Asser. Let me just share my screen quickly. You should be seeing it now. Okay, and as Chair said, this is a presentation on a slight expansion of the zoning boundaries of the CMU and NMU zoning districts, and then some revisions to the recently adopted zoning that took place in two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand nineteen. Interesting. Okay, sorry for that, a little bit of a technical glitch. Okay, so the project description is here. So again, we are proposing potentially, and this is an exploration at this point, but the potential proposal is to expand to the higher density mixed-use residential zoning districts. One along El Camino Real and between El Camino Real and Blenheim, and the other between Middlefield and Huntington. And then the second component of this proposal is to go back and revisit the already adopted zoning to clean up some errors and some inconsistencies that we found through the application of the zoning to apply best practices and lessons that have been learned, conform to new state laws, and essentially to try to streamline and make sure that we have have written it in the most efficient and most effective way that we possibly can. So a little background on this, the county applied for grants to fund this work back in two thousand nineteen before the pandemic. And the grants were actually approved in two thousand twenty, but because of the situation, you know, understandably enough, finalization and dispersment of that was significantly delayed, both because of delays on the state's part and delays on our part. So we did finally get approval of of the dispersment of the money, and the Board of Supervisors approved selection of a contractor to to run this project in two thousand twenty-one. And here we are, the project is finally underway. We would have been before you probably something like two years earlier, had we not encountered all of the difficulties we've all been suffering through. So I'm touch on this in in two parts, just talking about the zoning expansion first and then briefly touching on the revisions. So as you'll all recall, we we completed three basic phases of rezoning along Middlefield Phase One, the NMU zoning. Phase Two was along El Camino Real and Fifth and around the junction, Middlefield Junction, the crossing of the railroad tracks. And then the final phase was the industrial areas along Edison and up in the, I would say, I guess, northeastern section of North Fair Oaks, also industrial. So those are shown in green. And the expansion would be these R three S five areas that you see right between Middlefield and Huntington up at the top of of this graphic and the R three areas between El Camino Real and Blenheim, and then a small expansion of the NMUDR, which is the light yellow portion that you see here. And so essentially, what is happening is that it's proposed to expand the CMU zoning. CMU one along El Camino Real, CMU three along Middlefield and the NMUDR to encompass the entire block between the two streets. So right now, the zoning is split across the block, which has been creating some inconsistencies and some difficulties with development. So that is the proposal for expiration, something either identical to or similar to the recently adopted zoning, but just expanded to encompass those entire blocks and the parcels that cross them. And so just looking a little more closely at that, you can see here's an aerial view of those parcels. It's not a huge number of parcels, but it does make some significant differences in the developability of projects in those areas. And again, a little bit closer. So here is the the areas between El Camino and Blenheim. And then here are the areas up by Middlefield between Middlefield and Huntington. So and another just zoomed in so you can see what the zonings are in those areas in a little more detail. And here's the other the other portion as well. So so the basic purpose is to ensure consistent zoning throughout those contiguous areas to make it so that residential and residential mixed-use zoning is applicable in both. Right now, the areas that are are behind the CMU are high-density residential, but it doesn't allow commercial mixed-use, and the standards for the high-density residential are different. We have gotten quite a few proposals by developers who have control of sites in both areas continuously or have sites that span both areas. And it forces, essentially forces them to come in and to rezone on a spot-by-spot basis, on a parcel-by-parcel basis, which is causes delays is ineffective and basically it's a difficult process to pursue for every single parcel that does span those areas. So that is the proposal that is is going to be advanced to explore those areas. It makes sense to expand that and then rezone those areas so they're they're consistent across that area. So that is a basic just capsule summary of the first part of this proposal, just going on to the second part. So we're just essentially calling this as zoning regulations cleanup. We would revisit and revise the standards in the existing rezoned areas, and those include the NMU, NMU ECR, El Camino Real, CMU one, two, three, M one NFO, and M one Edison. So all of the rezoned areas that were completed in Phases one, two, and three. And again, to correct some errors, there are some inconsistencies in what we adopted to incorporate changes to state law, which have invalidated some of the provisions in our zoning regulations to clarify the regulations and apply best practices and lessons learned from projects coming forward and applying for and and proceeding with development in those areas. So that's a very straight, a very straightforward cleanup, but we do have to proceed as though it's a rezoning. It has to go again, it has to have an environmental review, it has to go to the Board, the Planning Commission, North Forks Council, just as the other part would. So and again, these are the phases. So it'd be assessing all of these phases, although there wouldn't necessarily be changes in every zoning district. That would be to be determined as we analyze what improvements could be made. So we have a consultant team that will be working on both phases of this. Wallace Roberts and Todd, Ringcon Consultants who do environmental work, CSW, which is infrastructure consulting, W Transit does transportation, Miller Planning Associates. Nuester Casa will be working as a subconsultant to this team, and the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center will be also. And the schedule for this, so we are in the project kickoff phase right now, March twenty-second. We'll be doing analysis and community outreach in March and April, and the community outreach will be ongoing. And then we hope to have draft alternatives for the rezoning and the zoning amendments in September or November of this year. Environmental analysis will be underway in April, and we'll go through May of next year. Presentation of draft zoning amendments would be targeted for December of this year through February of next year, and the final zoning proposal and adoption is targeted for March to June of next year. So it is a fairly long-term project about a year and a few months from now. So right now, we're also undertaking stakeholder interviews. There will be interview invitations going out to community-based organizations and other stakeholders shortly, so you may be hearing about that. We are putting together an advisory working group. And one of the reasons I'm before you now is to invite council members to take part in that advisory working group. And then the consultants will be giving a formal presentation and and a full kickoff. I'm giving a very brief and kind of cursory overview in this case, but the consultants will be for you for a full kickoff, and we're targeting the April twenty-eighth council meeting for that kickoff. So turning to the advisory working group, so so we have put together a number of staff members that will be helping to provide technical assistance, liaison to departments, liaison to the community, including our department, the Housing Department, our Office of Sustainability, our Public Works Department, a representative from Caltrans for this district, the Office of Community Affairs as Supervisor's Office, and then what we are, we are asked, we would suggest two members at least, and possibly a an adult member and a youth member. And we, I'm unsure if a formal nomination, and and we would leave it to the council yourselves to determine how many members and what the appropriate membership is. I am, we have agendized that request as a formal request at next week's meeting. I'm not entirely certain that's a necessary step or whether this can be done more informally, but just to be sure, we do have it on the agenda, so we can go forward and make that request next week, and the council will formally nominate members if that is the direction that you choose to go. So with that, that is my very brief presentation, or kind of pre-kickoff to the April kickoff for this project. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from from council members with regard to Will's presentation? I see Councilmember Lopez, Linda, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Sure. Hi, Will. Thank you so much for the information. The consultant team, is there, I I don't quite understand why a local organization wasn't on the team or is not on the team. You have Nuester that Casa on there, which I know is doing terrific, excellent work, but their base is East Palo Alto. So I'm just curious why they're on the consultant team and not say, I don't know, Fair Oaks Community Center or some of the other local org organizations.
That's a good question. So so that was the proposal that came before us in response to to our request for proposals, included Nuester Casa. I do believe they're they're trying to do more work in North Fair Oaks and are expanding beyond East Palo Alto. And the credentials that they presented to us for for work in the area seem to be appropriate for us. I'm not certain the Fair Oaks Community Center in particular had the the bandwidth or or capacity, the capacity or or specialization to do that work, but we will be reaching out to multiple community-based organizations and other stakeholders, so perhaps not as a formal part of the team, but that input will definitely be in the process.
But who was part of, who did the analysis already? Was it your consultant team?
Of of who is appropriate to be.
You, I I was looking at your calendar, and it looks like the analysis was already done.
No, the analysis is just beginning now. So we are, we are ground zero of this process. We have, we have really not completed anything except choosing, selecting the consultant team and then coming before you now. So that 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 will be starting up.
Okay, yeah, I have a a criticism about the consultant team, but you've already answered. But Nuester Casa and Peninsula PCRC, although in their in their own right, of course, they're doing excellent work. I don't want to diminish that. But for consulting on this type of project for North Fair Oaks, I think more effort should have been made to include North Fair Oaks. That's it. Thank you so much, Will.
Thank you, Linda.
Also, Member Rodriguez, I see your hand up. Pepper, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Will, for the presentation. So in the past, eh, an alternative that could eh eh actually be more inclusive rather than eh getting advice, as Linda was saying, from eh outside organizations. Eh would be to create a a community committee from, you know, residents in North Fair Oaks. And these committees or subcommittees eh tend to be temporary and specialized, you know, to participate only on these specific tasks. It's so I I would suggest, you know, in in lack of finding another organization it to maybe create a committee from North Fair Oaks residents who may participate in this. And also, I concur with Linda in in terms of considering there are into many organizations, you know, here in North Fair Oaks. But I know that El Concilio of San Mateo County is based right here. They have been doing tremendous work in the community for, you know, over twenty-five years. And there's also the Neighborhood Association, Fair Oaks Beautification Association, which, you know, they may or may not be interested in this task, considering that they are mainly doing work on the eh avenues neighborhood, and you know, the the bulk of this zoning is going to be outside of their specific area, but yet, you know, there, there may still be some some interested in that.
Yeah, I think we may have considered and and maybe dismissed the idea of a phobia because of they they're not in proximity, and we have tried to engage them in similar efforts, and they were more interested in their particular geography. But I would say, so, you know, we are in the initial stages. It's not out of the question to add groups or to form other committees, as you say, ever, such as a community or residence committee. This would be the kind of thing that we would look to the members of the advisory group to advise us on as we move forward. As we have membership in the advisory group, you part of that will be to weigh in on how best do we do outreach and get input from the community, how to structure it, and who should be involved. So I think that's an, that's excellent, that excellent session would be also the kind of suggestion that we would hope to get from from the members of the council at at the advisory group itself as well.
Thank you. And I think, you know, particularly the residents close to those specific areas to go through rezoning may be especially interested in, you know, in voicing opinions, concerns, advice, what have you, because they they probably know better, you know, what's what's going on in their, in their part of their neighbor. Thanks.
Are there other questions from council members? Actually, Will, I've I've got one for you, and and you know, it's coming from a fairly limited background in this. But as you were describing it to me, I couldn't help but think that that rezoning some of these areas from R three to CMU or NMU could potentially result in a reduction of the housing stock in the area. You you discussed the current housing being fairly high density. And it's my thought that as we move to CMU or NMU, that density might be reduced, the the and the level of housing stock might be reduced. I don't want to put the cart before the horse in this thing, but is that something that's a potential impact of the rezoning? We actually lose housing units as we go ahead and do this?
No, in fact, the CMU zoning, while it is high-density residential, also is a much higher density residential. So it would be, it would be increasing density. And that is part of the intent is to, we have two high-density zoning districts that are not quite compatible with each other. And we would prefer to align them not at the lower density, but at the higher density.
Okay, now that makes sense then. Are there any other questions from council members? Do we have any any public comment on this agenda item?
During this time, members of the public, if you wish to comment on the agenda number four, North Fair Oaks zoning expansion and zoning amendment project. Please raise your hand now. Seems that there are no public comments at this time. Back to you, Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Then, as I understand it, Will, you'll return next week and solicit council volunteers to join the project team. Is that correct?
That is correct. We would appreciate the the council determining multiple, at least one adult and one youth member appropriately or or more. Obviously, we can't have too many because it would conflict with the Brown Act, so there's a limited number of participants that can engage in this. But yes, we would ask for a formal nomination, and then we would go forward with a kickoff of the advisory group in early April.
Okay, well, I'd I'd like to ask each of the council members to give us some thought to consider volunteering for for that council. It sounds like a bit of a change as far as our zoning is concerned, one that'll impact the community for quite some time. So think about it, and we'll we'll solicit nominations next Thursday. We we took things somewhat out of order on the agenda. Would you like to go ahead and and give an overview of SB nine, Will, and then we'll we'll deal with the community college issue? After that, why don't you go ahead and and finish your agenda items this evening?
Certainly.
And we can go from there. The next item is basically an overview of SB nine and its potential impact to North Fair Oaks. I asked Will to to kind of give us an overview on that, given the amount of of attention it's getting in the press, not to mention action in in other municipalities and communities. So if you can go ahead and and give us your perspective on that, Will, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Let me just share my screen again. So so as the chair said, this is a presentation on Senate Bill nine, and this is a new law that opposes new requirements and and most appropriately importantly, limitations on the county review. A type of here, and approval of subdivisions and residential development on parcels that are zoned for signal, single-family residential use. And so and and this is, this is, in essence, this is the information that we have recently presented to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors as well. So we we are providing essentially the same information, but with some some additional information relevant to North Fair Oaks. And then hopefully, we can dig in further with questions and and with discussion. So I'm just going to go through a brief overview of what the law is, where it applies, the two provisions of the law, which are two-unit developments and urban lot splits, and then how those can be combined. A brief summary and then overview of guidance and next steps, and then talk a little bit about an issue that Chair Asser asked me to to look into, which is the Turner Center's analysis of the impacts of SB nine. So to begin, SB nine is a new Senate bill, was effective on January first of this year, and it amends California law to require ministerial approval of two-unit developments on qualifying single-family parcels. And it also amends the Subdivision Matt Act to require ministerial approval of certain subdivisions. The law calls urban lot splits also on qualifying single-family parcels. And so SB nine was in all single-family zoning districts within what is called the designated urbanized area or urban cluster as defined by the U.S. Census Bureau. And what's important for our purposes here is that is essentially all of the unincorporated county east of Highway two eighty. The relevant zoning districts are R one, RHRE, and R one CCP countywide. In North Fair Oaks, it's R one zoning specifically, and all the R one zoning parcels are covered by SB nine. And so if you see here, it's the blue areas of North Fair Oaks that would potentially be impacted by the provisions of SB nine. So I'm going to sort of take the two provisions of the law in turn. So the first is two-unit development. And the law requires what's called ministerial approval, which means no hearings, staff level review, and application of objective standards only to two-unit developments on eligible single-family parcels. And a two-unit development is a proposed development that can result in no more than two new units. The development could be one additional unit on a parcel that has a unit. It could be one additional unit on a parcel that already has a unit and an accessory dwelling unit as well. So it can result ultimately in more than two units on a parcel if it is just a two-unit development. There's a little complication when you are subdividing a parcel, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But what they call two-unit development in the law is not necessarily two units, only it could result in in a little bit more than that. So again, it must be single-family zoning in an urbanized area or cluster. The project site cannot be a historic landmark or in a historic district. There are none of those in North Fair Oaks and cannot contain prime agricultural land, sensitive habitats, or be subject to a conservation easement. That's also inapplicable. And the project cannot alter or demolish deed-restricted affordable housing or rent-controlled housing or housing that was on the rental market and has been withdrawn in the last fifteen years or was occupied by a tenant in the past three years. And there may be properties in North Fair Oaks that do meet these conditions, but that would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis as people apply to undertake development through SB nine. Projects that are applying to develop two units or or one additional unit, depending on how how they're going about it, are remain subject to zoning standards, to subdivision standards, and to design standards, that they must be objective, which means they, we cannot exercise subjective judgment. The standards must be noble in advance, and they must essentially be yes or no. Does it meet the standard or not? We cannot, we cannot say, well, in our judgment, we feel like maybe it does, or we needed to look in a certain way. That is a certain style. It's it's black or white decision-making. And the standards that are applied may not physically preclude construction of two units of at least eight hundred square feet in size for each unit, except that we can apply four-foot side and rear setbacks, even if they do preclude the the two eight hundred square foot units. And if existing structure is being rebuilt in the same location, if a new structure is being rebuilt in the same location as an existing structure, then no setbacks are required for that structure. We can require only one parking space for the units that are created through SB nine. And if the project is within a half-mile walking distance of a high-quality transit quarter or major transit stop or one block of car-share location, we cannot require any parking. The proposed units cannot be used for short-term rental, and we cannot preserve the connected units, meaning duplexes that are essentially one structure with two units as long as they comply with the building code. So again, no hearings, a review and approval are at the staff level only. And the project may be denied if the building official, meaning that the director of the building department in our case, makes written findings based on a preponderance of evidence that the project will have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety or the physical environment, and there's no feasible method to mitigate that. By law, specific adverse impact has a particular meaning that is shown here, and it must be based on objective identifiable standards that were adopted prior to the application coming in. So that is the the basic overview of what is allowed in the the two-lot development. The the two-unit development, excuse me. So just turning to the urban lot splits. So the urban lots but requires ministerial approval of subdivisions of one lot into two lots if they meet certain requirements. So the eligibility criteria is are the same as the two-unit development, single-family zoning in an urbanized area, which includes all of North Fair Oaks. No historic landmarks or districts, no prime ag land, no sensitive habitats, and nothing subject to a conservation easement. And again, the provisions about rent control, affordable housing, and housing occupied by tenants in recent past still obtain. So the split must result in two roughly equal lots. Basically, when you have one lot and split it into two per SB nine, the maximum difference in size is sixty forty. So it doesn't have to be exactly equivalent, but it must be close. Each resulting lot from the split must be at least twelve hundred square feet. And you cannot do two SB nine lot splits. So once you split a lot once through SB nine, you cannot split either of the lots created again using those provisions. And neither the owner nor quote-unquote any person acting in concert with the owner can have previously subdivided an adjacent parcel through. can have previously subdivided an adjacent parcel through an SB nine split. And this is intended to, to keep developers coming, from coming in and splitting a whole series of parcels that are adjacent to one another and essentially doing large scale subdivisions. The, the law intends for owner occupants to be the applicants of, for these projects. Although it does not necessarily preclude other parties, but they are trying to, to aim this at smaller scale individuals who want to split a single lot. Units on the new lots must be used for residential purposes and applicants must sign an affidavit stating that they intend to live in one of the housing units built on an SB nine lot for a certain number of years from the date of approval. Unless it's a, it's a qualified nonprofit or other organization. And this again is aimed at the same intent. It's to preclude large scale professional developers from coming in, splitting a bunch of lots and creating a bunch of new units in, on the large, in mass. There are no other owner occupancy requirements. And again, the resulting units built on lots created through an SB nine lot split cannot be used for short term rental. Again, we are limited in our ability to impose parking requirements. Only one parking space per unit and no parking again is required if the project is in proximity to transit or car share. The projects that are built on the lots that are split via SB nine remain subject again to zoning subdivision and other standards, but they must be objective. They are staff level only. There will be no hearings. And again, the project can be denied if the building official makes findings. Those findings must be preexisting. They must be specific. And there, they might, we must be able to demonstrate there's no feasible method to mitigate or avoid the impacts. So how do these two things combine? So parcels created through SB nine, as I said, cannot be split again using SB nine. But parcels created through the SB nine lots but can subsequently, subsequently be developed with the two unit development provision of SB nine. So what that means is you have a single family residential parcel. You get split it into and build two units on each resulting parcel. Potentially, if you meet all the standards and the other criteria that are described here. In that case, we are not required to permit more than two. So we do not have to, to allow two plus an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit is two units max regardless of the type of units. But this can result in four total units from what was originally one single lot. So just the implications of this planning commission, board of supervisors and North Frooks Community Council will not see these projects. Design review in any districts that are subject to designer view will be limited to a subject of the existing standards that are objectively applicable. And the number of potential projects and impacts is relatively unclear. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And I, I provided to the council and hopefully you've got this in, in your packet, an overview, which is a straightforward graphic that the Association of Bay Area Governments put together. I won't walk through it here. It summarizes essentially what I've said, but I think it's a really handy graphic to see what are the various permutations if you combine the lot split and the development provisions in SB nine. So that I just thought that might be a useful graphic to, to grapple a little bit with. What are the various possibilities? So the planning department has created an SB nine mapping tool where you can look up specific areas or specific properties and see whether those properties are potentially eligible, likely to be ineligible or almost certainly ineligible. There's also an applicant checklist on the planning department website to help applicants screen whether their, their project may be eligible. We also have some guidance which summarizes a lot of what I've talked to today on the website. And then it is possible for the county to adopt and implementing ordinance for SB nine. We're not required to do so. It's not entirely clear what the benefit would be because the state law is fairly clear on what's allowed and disallowed. But we are going to evaluate the impacts and determine if it would be beneficial for us to do so if there's a need. If there are impacts that can be mitigated through, through such an ordinance. So again, these are the areas of North Frooks that would potentially be subject to SB nine where, where owners of these parcels might be able to either split their lots or create new units on the lots. And this is what the tool kind of at the, the zoomed out scale, the tool that we have on our website that I just showed. This is what it looks like. You can see North Frooks there and the yellow areas in these, these different geographies are the probably ineligible or likely ineligible. If you were seeing red, it would be almost certainly ineligible and the greens are potentially eligible. But that's not dispositive. We have to analyze each project on a project by project basis because there are a lot of different factors depending on what's on the lot now, what the sizes and configuration that may or may not make these parcels eligible despite what it shows on the map. And here's what it looks like. If you go to that mapping site and you look at North Frooks in total, this isn't zoomed into a specific parcel. But you can see this is what it would show you. And again, most of the, our, and the zoning that is on lot. This does not look at what is actually built on the lot. So we did not go to that level of detail. And I, I don't think we have the capacity to do that on this, on this kind of scale. But it does give a general filter for people to see whether their parcel or project is potentially eligible. So, so Chair Esser did ask me to take a look at the Turner Center analysis. So the, the Turner Center is a housing policy center at Berkeley. And they assess the potential impact of this new law statewide. And they looked at all single family residential zoned parcels. And they analyzed not only the potential based on the qualifications in the law, but what would be financially feasible to do in terms of lots bits or redevelopment. So and their conclusion was that only about ten percent of all of the theoretically developable parcels in the state are actually financially feasible, meaning that it would be worth the cost of both going through the application process and creating what you could create on the new lot. And you would get enough profit to make it actually worth your while. But for one thing, it's a very rough analysis. So that ten percent could be true. It remains to be seen whether that will be, whether that actually captures what is feasible or not feasible and how much interest there will be from applicants coming forward. The other factor is that the turn analysis is statewide. It does provide some smaller geography estimates for LA, for Sacramento, but not for San Mateo County and not for any geographies at the sub county level. So I think it's probably safe to assume that north, in North Frooks, it's a similar number. If they had looked at it kind of on a, on a small geography scale, looking at North Frooks, it probably would turn out that about ten percent might be developable. Well, we can't assume that because we don't know how different the conditions are from what they looked at on the state aggregate. But I think the takeaway is it looks much more dramatic than it probably is because it's not that cost effective for a lot of homeowners to actually pursue this path. But we don't know how close this ten percent is really when we get to North Frooks itself. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I would urge everyone to, to check out the, the mapping tool and the other resources that are on our website. And I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
If there are any questions from council members, go ahead and raise your hand. Councilmember Lopez, I see your hand up, Linda. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have several questions, Will. Excuse me. Your last comment was not, it's not cost effective or may not be cost effective to pursue for homeowners. So what will be the incentive for homeowner to find the money to, to get this work done? I mean, that, that's just, you know, finances.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really interesting question. I, I think it varies greatly depending on the individual homeowner circumstances size of the units that they might be able to create and the size of the parcel. So if you have a very small parcel and you wouldn't be able to develop very much on it, it may be that we think is the potential rental income from another unit or the potential sale value of subdividing the unit and having two projects is not worth the cost of you obtaining financing and, and going through the process and constructing it. You know, but it really, it depends on the individual project, the parcel, the homeowner, what kind of resources they have. The Turner Center made a very broad analysis of those factors. But when you drill down to the individual level, it's, it's much harder to determine.
Yeah, I'm concerned because if this is being established to not only help homeowners and how, and, and you said that we don't want to give the developers a free hand in this, but that the priority would be the homeowners. You can't have it both ways. So if that's the case, then we, there needs to be some other mechanisms in place to actually help a homeowner pursue this. And that's either through the, you know, I mean, I'm thinking of through the housing department, the credits. So there's got to be more analysis on what incentives to help finance this type of thing. And I just had one, one more question. The little junior ADUs. I read something that they're approximately five hundred square feet.
No, five hundred. That's correct.
Little studio or what is that?
So the, the new state ADU laws allow you to build multiple accessory dwelling units. You can build an accessory dwelling in, in San Mateo County of at least eight hundred square feet that is either detached on your property or attached to the property. And you can also build within the existing footprint of your house, a small, it would be like a mini studio. It still has to have cooking facilities. It still has to have its own bathroom. But it is five hundred square feet maximum, and you can do both of those things on the same property.
Oh, wow. Okay. Small one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Will. Thank you.
Are there other questions from council members?
I do have a couple.
Please, Councilmember Rodriguez, go ahead, ever.
Thank you. And one of them is in terms of parking. So there will be only one a parking space required per unit, as you said. And but considering that that some some areas may already have an ADU built. I'm wondering if the, if the ADU unit when built, did that require an additional parking space, you know?
It depends on the unit. In so, in some cases, we are allowed to require one space for a new ADU. If it's a conversion of existing space, we can't. And very similarly to the SB nine provisions, if it's within proximity to particular kinds of transit or car share, we also can't require. So if it's in, in just a standard ADU that's not in proximity to transit, it's built new, it's not within the space of the existing house or an existing structure, we do require a parking space for that. And if someone came in and wanted to create an SB nine unit, we would also require a parking space for that. But in some cases, the state has exempted certain types of ADUs, particularly conversions of garages, conversions of portions of houses from parking requirements, and we're not allowed to impose that requirement on those ones.
Okay, and so for proximity to public transit, what constitutes proximity? Or is, is there a distance known or established?
It is a distance. It is. And, and maybe Tim remembers better than I, whether it's a quarter mile proximity. But it's either a quarter mile or half a mile proximity from in general transit that has a transit stop that has two bus lines or other or train lines that have fifteen minute headways. So that there is service every fifteen minutes.
I, I just looked it up, Will. It's a half mile walking distance.
Okay.
Half mile. Okay. And then my, let me see. I, I don't know. Yeah, my last question is, is this only for residential areas? Because you know, the, the map that you showed included some of the light industrial areas. But is this applicable only? Is SB nine applicable only to residential areas or does it include all of the areas?
Only to residential areas and only to single family residential areas. So not to areas where duplexes or triplexes or multifamily housing is allowed only to the R one zoning district, which is just those single family portions of North Frooks.
Okay. And you said that one of the requirements was that if, if a lot was split and an additional unit built, that that would require it to be for the, for the owner to reside in that unit or at least in one?
In one of the units. Yeah, one or, one or the other. So the, if you, if an applicant came in and wanted to split the lot into and build another unit or two units on the other lot, they must reside in one of the units that is existing on one of the two lots.
But once, once the lot is split, could the owner of that entire property sell half of it, the other unit or, or not?
Yes, they absolutely. So once it's subdivided, they could sell off and likely that is going to be the intent of many of the applicants who come in is to reside in the, you split their personal half, continue to reside in one of the units that's on that parcel, create new units on the other parcel and sell it.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Are there other questions from council members? Councilmember Lopez, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, regarding the parking, well, just because the project is going to be within half a mile walking distance of transit or or one block of, what does it say? One block of car share vehicle location. That doesn't mean that someone's not going to drive a car. So I don't know. I, I think that because parking has continues to be an issue in North Fair Oaks, I don't think that we should have any exemptions on that. I really think, so on your two unit development standard requirements, I think it's bullet number two. I, I don't think that that's good to have that because there's no way to monitor it. And just because they live within proximity doesn't mean they don't have a car. But anyway, you know how people are.
Yeah, no, I can see the point. And I, I, I think many jurisdictions are wrestling with that same problem. I just, in our defense, this is imposed on us by the state. We have no flexibility to waive it.
Really? This one? The particular point?
All of the points that I described are, are part of Senate Bill nine, which imposes specific restrictions on how we can treat these units at the local jurisdiction level for every jurisdiction in the state.
Okay, so it's gonna, if it's an issue with other people, it'll come up in your analysis.
Correct. Yes, we're watching very carefully what other jurisdictions are doing and what is happening here. We have not had any formal applications yet for this.
Yeah.
So we don't have much track record, but we, we will be monitoring.
It's just that we make a lot of rules and laws in North Frooks, but they're not monitored. You know, extensively. So that, I was just thinking about that. Thank you so much, Will.
Thank you, Linda.
Are there any other questions from council members? I just, I wanted to reiterate, it's a sidebar conversation I had with Will that they're going to be including SB nine considerations to the extent that, that planning and building can in the, in the results of the housing inventory that's being developed as part of the update of the county housing element. Again, to Will's point, the, the level of detail isn't going to be particularly granular. But you know, this is going to be one of those things we're going to have to consider in there as well as things like Linda brought up a good point with regard to parking and the state allowances for parking in affordable housing, in senior housing, the kind of development that we're going to start to see along Middlefield Road, which may, which may actually exacerbate the parking problem that we have now. So it's all good background for us when we start taking a look at that inventory and really seeing what the plan is with regard. With regard to how we're going to meet our um, our uh, Rina goals over the next eight years. So. Appreciate the presentation in that regard, Will. Um, do we have any public comment on this issue?
During this time, members of the public, if you wish to comment on an agenda number five, SB nine and its impact in North Fair Oaks, please raise your hand now. Seems that there are no public comments at this time. Back to your chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And Will, when, when might we uh be able to put the uh, the housing inventory on a council agenda? We've been through a couple of delays on that, but.
Yeah.
What's the current, current status of that?
So, uh, excuse me, we've been wrestling with, with that. Um, it's a difficult analysis to do, um, and we've been kind of bogged down by a couple of, by. Um, some staff constraints, but uh, we're hoping April and it may be April 28th, the same day that we come for the kickoff of um. The North Hurst Res zoning with the consultant and the, the full um. The full presentation on that. I, I can't say that for certain, but um. Uh, we, we hope April.
Okay, well, do keep me in, keep me in the loop on that as that comes together because I want to make sure that we have enough time for your uh, for your presentation that evening.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Will. Okay, our final agenda item for the evening. I see we have John here now, so we're good to go on that is the um. Is Senate Bill eight ninety-three. That is the San Mateo County Community College fee rate modification uh legislation. Uh, discussion is going to kicked off by um John Pimentel, who's a member of the San Mateo County. Community College Board. John, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Escher, and I hope the board will accept my apology. Uh, Little League practice ran a little late this evening, so I've missed my. First position uh tonight. Sorry.
No problem.
Uh, as you all know, um, our community college is a critical piece of our higher education infrastructure. Uh, providing access to uh both. Affordable lower division work for students who are transferring on to four-year schools. As well as job training and certifications for folks who are going directly into the workplace. And finally, for um lifelong learning and avocational activities to build community. Uh, those are the three missions of the California Community Colleges. Unfortunately, uh, in nineteen eighty-five. Uh, during a state budget crisis, a small uh effort was made. To start charging students enrollment fee to attend community college. And uh, that has now progressed to the point where students are expected to pay six, uh, forty-six dollars per unit. Uh, statewide, and it's actually a law. Uh, uh, in statute. And it was put there again initially as a budget item, but now it has become uh, uh, enforced, if you will, statewide because. Uh, the statewide chancellor's office doesn't want to have competition between districts fighting over uh students uh with. More attractive pricing. The net effect of this is that we have now. A barrier to participation in the community colleges for a full-time student, that forty-six dollars a unit. Is almost fifteen hundred dollars a year. And that's before you add in the other costs necessary to attend college such as books, technology. Uh, transportation, uh, rent and food, uh, insurance. And so as a result, in our high cost area. Attending Kenyatta College can cost over fifteen thousand dollars a year for a student who's living uh independently. So what we're trying to do with SB eight ninety-three. It's, this is a bill that follows on an effort last year that failed. The bill last year would have given flexibility to any community college district to reduce its fees below that forty-six dollars per unit. And uh, we got feedback uh by the bill dying, that that was not acceptable to the overall uh, uh, community college community. Because of this issue about keeping it fair statewide. But that doesn't take into account the high cost of living in San Mateo County. So this year Senator Becker made some adjustments to the bill to have it apply to San Mateo County only. The idea here is if we can make it work in San Mateo County. And prove that it increases enrollment, increases accessibility. It makes it easier for more students to attend community college and therefore improve their uh economic potential outcomes. Then maybe we can take it back to a statewide uh perspective later. The reason why it makes sense in our county is, as we all know, property values have skyrocketed. We are a basic aid district, which means that our taxes, our local property taxes remain within the county and pay for. Uh, uh, the vast majority of community college expenses. In fact, our community college has a general fund budget of about two hundred and thirty million dollars a year. And eighty-five percent of that comes from property taxes. So the idea here is um, because we have such robust funding available for our community colleges. Why are we creating this barrier to access for students when we could eliminate it? The amount of funds raised or revenues raised by the fee, enrollment fees. From students within San Mateo County is about eight million dollars a year. So a small fraction, less than four percent of uh our total budget comes from this revenue source. And we actually have reserves that would allow us to reduce this fee to zero. However, we run into a problem with state law. And so in order for us to experiment with this idea of reducing fees. Um, we need to first change the state law. So that's why we're. Taking a local issue, but having to get an exemption out of uh state statute. So, and in a nutshell, that's the point. There's more to uh how we might distribute this um. Uh, free access to the community colleges with an emphasis on um. Uh, under-resourced communities and students who are first generation applicants, as I was. Uh, in the community college system. And so, uh, but those details are to be determined by the Board of Trustees. And they will be enabled by this legislation. We're asking for the uh, uh, North Fair Oaks Community Council's support. Or to consider a resolution that would be sent to the legislature as the bill is moving through the legislative process. Uh, it's very helpful to have a resolution from local community organizations. In support of the bill to emphasize that it's something that we want to do here in the county. Last point that we've tried to make with the state. Is we're not asking for any funding to come from the state of California. Or to be backfilled in the future. This is going to be paid for out of San Mateo County. Uh, resources and have no impact on community colleges outside of our district. And to take it one last step. We see this as an opportunity for um the. People who've enjoyed the increase in land values and who are paying the property taxes. To support economic accessible, economic uh accessibility and equity. For those who don't have the enjoyment of those high property values. So in a way, we're trying to get the landowners to make community college free. Um, I'd be happy to delve into any of the details. Um, we have provided a suggested letter of support and I'd be happy to um. Help in terms of putting together a resolution for the uh, for the um. Uh, commission or um. Provide any answers to any questions that y'all might have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, John. What I, what I'd like to do now is, is ask our student council members, Gabrielle Hocky and Itzit Lali. Currency to, to kind of provide their perspective on the purpose and the potential uh. Impact of the uh, of legislation, kind of from a student's perspective. I'm not sure. Gabby, would you like to go first in this?
Yeah, of course. Um, as a senior in high school receiving college acceptance letters and financial aid packages. It's just like a hard reality how much higher education does cost. Here in California and knowing that if I can't afford uh the CSU or UC, I have. A community college to take, like I would still pursue. Education even if it's a community college, but knowing that like just going to my Kenyatta College, San Mateo. Um, community college skyline, any community college around here will cost about like five, fifteen thousand dollars. It's the same amount as the UC or CSU. So knowing that like there's a chance that we, community college could be cheaper and San Mateo. Have, has the resources to give students more opportunities. To attend community college and take courses. That are like cheaper and that will benefit them will be amazing that like with any student or even adult that wants to go back to, to school. Has the ability and resources to be able to attend or get higher education. So. If there's any possibility to, that we can get the units to be cheaper, that would be amazing and accessible for all. San Mateo residents.
Thank you very much, Gabby. How about you too, uh, Sitlali?
Yeah, yeah. So hi, everyone. It's great to, to be talking about the possibility of having essentially free tuition for our community college students of the San Mateo. College District. Um. And yeah, basically the SB eight nine three bill that Senator Josh Becker is in need of support with. Provides um essentially free tuition for students apart the, a part of the SMCCD this, you know, SMCCD. Uh, as a current senior attending middle college at Kenyatta College, I've had the privilege of benefiting from free tuition. To attend Kenyatta College. This includes services such as technology, books, uh, personal counseling, food, um, et cetera. Um, this has led me not to worry about um. To not, you know, to lead me not to worry about the anxiety of seeing how um. I, let's see. So it's actually very personal to me because as a first gen student, um. It causes. It prevents me to not worry about earning that college degree as a first generation college student. I didn't have to go through the anxiety of seeing. How to be able to pay when classes started, but I was rather overwhelmed with the excitement and the joy that I'd be supported financially this way. Um, and the real question is, why can't it be like this for every student? You know? If I could have this opportunity, why can't other students be blessed with free, or essentially free tuition? Um, because I've, I've been talking with some peers, um. And they talk about how stressful it is just managing jobs, the family situations and school at the very exact same time. It takes a toll um on someone's um mental health and. The student, if you put yourself in a student perspective, they're wanting to complete something they're passionate about. It's something they want to do. This, it's something they want to complete. And it shouldn't have to be this mentally exhausting when it comes to the financial aspect of it. Um, so essentially having free tuition for these students will have a gigantic impact um. On students who are willing to graduate or even for the students who weren't sure. Um. So if you take it from a student perspective, let's help all of these students and support SB eight nine three. Um, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Sitlali. Um, do we have any questions from council members, either for the students or for John about the legislation? I see Councilmember Lopez, your hand is up. Linda, go ahead.
Yes, um, John, I have a question about. The Promise Scholars Program. This is only uh to assist. Students signed up in that program. Is that correct?
Well, uh, no.
Oh, okay.
So that the Promise Scholars Program is uh, has been in place at the district for several years now. It started at Skyline. It's expanding at CSM and Kenyatta. Um, but there is, there are more students who qualify for uh Promise Scholars. Than there are resources to um make available to them. So one of the first groups that will be helped by this uh legislation. Would be funding for Promise, the Promise Scholars Program. Right now we have about two thousand students in that program, but we estimate the demand at closer to six thousand. So the way Promise Scholars is fund, funded now is through a previous state legislation, AB nineteen. That gave, that provides a certain amount of uh authority to each of the districts to have a Promise Scholars Program. Um, and what we'd like to do is use more of our district-only resources. To expand the Scholars, the Promise Scholars Program. So it's. Linda, part of this initiative will allow us to do that, expand the Promise Scholars. But it allows us, this would allow us to go even further. And say any resident in San Mateo County wouldn't have to pay fees. Plus, it would allow us to use our general fund monies that come from property tax. For non-academic purposes such as buying books, buying technology. Um, transportation assistance, food assistance, maybe even rental assistance. So it gives us a great deal of, a great deal more flexibility. We've seen that Promise Scholars works really, really quite well. A, a statistic I'm not particularly proud of is for students who come to the community college. With the intention of transferring to four-year. Only one in five, less than one in five actually make it out. Through that transfer process in less than three years.
Wow.
For students that are in Promise Scholars, that, that percentage increases to one in two, literally fifty percent, twenty percent versus fifty percent. So it's a great, it's a really great program. That'll be the primary recipient of the dollars from, that we are able to free up with this legislation. But we actually want to go further and experiment with some of those other things I mentioned, like um. Books, transportation, rental housing and food.
So John, if the, if that program seems to be the model. Um, is it going to be duplicated at the other junior colleges? Because you said the, the majority are at Skyline right now?
Yes, it, the program started in, in two thousand seventeen at Skyline.
Okay.
And it's ramped up since then to be uh. Uh, several hundred students, almost a thousand students at Skyline. After it was proven successful model at Skyline, then it, then we started uh. Before I got on the board, they started the program at CSM and. Uh, and Kenyatta, but those programs haven't really ramped up yet, yet. Last year um, in our budget. The Community College District reallocated seven and a half, uh, seven point two five million dollars. Uh, for the Free Community College Initiative. And the county government, our county supervisors chipped two million dollars into that. So we put nine million dollars towards Free Community College. And that allowed us to expand uh the Promise Scholars Program from two thousand students to four thousand. And most of that ramp up is occurring, Linda, at Kenyatta and CSM because.
Oh, I.
We already have a big program going at, at Skyline.
Great. Thank you so much, John. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Rodriguez, ever. Floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Pimentel, for um coming to talk to us. Um, eh, I was once a student as well in having attended uh Kenyatta College. When the unit was about, about six dollars, uh, believe it or not. Um, it is certainly shocking to hear that the unit has gone up uh to forty-six dollars. Particularly considering that the salaries for workers have not gone, you know, um, that much. Um, I mean, the price has gone um exponentially. Um, and that is without considering the um. Eh, living expenses in, in this area, let alone books, et cetera. Um, so yeah, it is incredible and um. Eh, I had one question. So considering that the county of San Mateo could um. Eh, potentially support um. Eh, SB eight nine three and pass this as a law. Um, what would um. Prevent um students from all the counties to rush and, you know, um, come to uh San Mateo County colleges?
It's a very good question. One of the concerns I had uh with. What we do at the community colleges, it has to do with international students, ever who have, who have done just that. They've come from. Uh, uh, international locations. And that program had been encouraged in the past because you can charge out-of-state students a higher tuition uh enrollment fee. Um, uh, so in order to address that, we said in this bill, the students. So in order to address that, we said in this bill, the student must be a resident of San Mateo County. So international students and even other California students who live outside of San Mateo County would not be eligible for this free tuition program. It's still conceivable that someone would, you know, move in and then claim later that they are a resident. But that process would take some time. It's possible that someone could, you know, falsely claim a relative's address in San Mateo County when they sign up and, and access this at our taxpayers' expense. So it's a, it's a risk, but at the end of the day, if, if a kid from San Francisco or Santa Clara County was going to go through that effort to try and become a resident of San Mateo County to access this program, I, I think we, you know, would try to accommodate them.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, as far, as far as other, other community college districts taking up the charge, I, I think that could happen. There are, there are sixteen of the seventy-two community college districts who are, like us, basic aid, where they have sufficient local resources and they don't rely on the, the state apportionment system where you have to have ADA and count the students. So those might be the next wave of other districts who adopt this approach. And then hopefully we can, you know, roll back the, the idea statewide. But for now, we've got to just focus on our county.
Yeah, thank you. My second question is in regards to, because you mentioned, you know, county residency as, or you know, even state residency as a, as a, as a requirement for enrollment. And, and I'm thinking that, I'm not sure how it works currently for Dreamers or students who have, you know, a, an immigration status pending. How would that work for them?
For this program, those rules would need, are still yet to be created. However, we do have a very active and engaging program for Dreamers who already are tuition-free and who already do get a number of extra services in order to facilitate their attending the community college. So that's a, it's an area where the, the district has actually been pretty progressive in trying to attract and facilitate Dreamer participation.
Great, thank you. Just finally, I would say that I, I would encourage our council to support SB eight nine three as it would be a circular benefit or a win-win situation, you know, as it would help not only students to get ahead and consider education, even if they don't have the funding, the money to do it. But I think it would also potentially support our local community colleges with a consistent influx of students who might be potentially from the most marginalized areas, such as North Fair Oaks, Espalato, Pescadero, San Francisco, et cetera. So we have very, you know, various communities that would appreciate, you know, something like this happening in San Mateo County and particularly as we speak of equity, I think this would be a great way to lift up, you know, some of the students who have been left behind or the families to support them at least, you know, with this educational opportunity. So thank you.
Councilmember Suriel, Beatrice, the floor is yours.
Yes, so any student taking classes under this initiative will be free for, to, for them to continue. I'm thinking of the students who are in the Sequoia Adult School, who many times as they progress through their classes, they continue classes in community college as part of their program. And also adults returning to the community college because they're for work, just job skills, you know, the, our, it can, our economy changes. They need to go back and take courses and classes for the jobs that are offered in our area. So just, just clarity that if you're registering for classes, yes? Or?
Ye- yes, let me, I'll clarify first, those are exactly the populations that we're trying to attract into the community college system, Beatrice. So yes, absolutely, that is the goal. However, this legislation and the, and the effort for Free Community College, you might want to think of it as a two-step process. So the legislation is necessary in order for the community college district to reduce fees.
Right.
The second step will be for the Board of Trustees to create the specific parameters as to who will access this program. So my intention, I, this bill won't do exactly what you said. It will only reduce, it'll give the, our board the authority to reduce the fees below forty-six dollars per unit. But then our board needs to then pass its own resolution saying, these are the students who would qualify for the Free Community College Initiative. And, and, and those are, those, the groups that you just mentioned are exactly the target. And what I don't know yet is how would we try and limit it for, say, students who are of a certain whatever, high net worth, but who are attending the community college? Or students who are taking avocational classes for their own personal recreation or benefit, you know? If, if I want to take a photography class, should I really get to go for free? No, I can pay a fee. So we need to work those details out as the second step.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? I see none. Is there any public comment on this agenda item?
During this time, members of the public, if you wish to comment on Agenda Number Three, Discussion in San Mateo County Community College Fee Rate Modification SB eight point three, please raise your hand now.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry, Joshua.
Apologies. During this time, members of the public, if you wish to comment on Agenda Number Three, Discussion in San Mateo County Community College Fee Rate Modification SB eight nine three, please raise your hand now. Seems that there are no public comments at this time, back to you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Something I recently discovered is that as an advisory body to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, the North Fair Oaks Community Council is unable to pass motions or resolutions on specific legislation at the state level. What we can do is make a resume, recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to support the legislation. So what I'd like to do at this time is to place this item on the agenda for our next regular meeting that's next week. And at that time, we can entertain a motion requesting that our staff liaison, county legislative affairs, who has a role in this, as well as myself, can create a letter addressed to the Board of Supervisors requesting their support for the legislation. In fact, leveraging the draft that you put together for us, John, that'll be, that'll be very helpful. Does that process work for everyone? I see County Council Fox nodding his head, so that's, that's a good start. Any other comments or questions on that? Okay, well, thank you very much, John, for your presentations, it's Lali and Gabby for your, for your endorsement of this. And we'll take the next steps and see if we can get the board behind this and, and support the legislation. By the way, John, I noticed that the bill actually cleared out a committee this week, so I'm guessing there's, there's a time urgency to, to this.
It did, the, they went unanimously out of Senate Education, and the next stop will be Senate Appropriations. It's not set yet, but every bit of help will be useful, and thank you very much for your consideration. I, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you for your presentations tonight. That, that wraps up our agenda for this evening. Thanks to our presenters, John and Will. Thanks also to members of the public who attended and participated this evening, as well as the press. I see Michelle Iarchetta of the Redwood City Pulse covered us tonight. Thank you so much, Michelle. And as always, thanks to county staff, Emma, Tim, Justin, Joshua and Kenny for their support, particularly on the first night of March Madness and St. Patrick's Day. That's above and beyond the call of duty in my book, so thank you all very much for that. Next meeting is our regular session next Thursday, March twenty-fourth. We'll get an update on the Middlefield Road Project, an introduction to the county's newly-appointed Chief Equity Officer. And we'll hear from a group that's trying to improve the quality of the food served in Redwood City Schools. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. And with that, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you all, good night.